It being seven o'clock on a cold and windy January 8th, I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Madison Planning Board. We have no alternates. And so we will elevate no alternate. Approval of the agenda as presented?
The motion.
Motion being made in seconded. To approve the agenda as presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
Does oppose? The ayes have it, the number four is approval of the November 6th, 2024 meeting, because we all remember that we did not get a quorum on the 4th
Correct.
of December, so we did not have a December meeting. So any?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion been made in second to approve the November 6th, 2024 meeting minutes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, number five is public comment. We have one quasi-public, but we will close the public comment because we don't see any. Number six is old business, the first item on old business is Coleman's Pit. And because I am both the chair and the butter, I will step down. Oh. Then we don't have a quorum.
No.
Yeah, because Adam's not here, he'll be here next month.
Okay, because there is apparently no quorum, as the chair steps down, we will have to defer this old business to a little older business. So we'll see you in February with any luck. Number, let's see, the next on old business is master plan, and we have, so the Cherokee report that last night, that he had heard that the selectmen had taken out the money that we asked them to put in for the master plan. And so I went to the planning, to the selectmen last night and said, geez, our master plan's more than 20 years old and it needed to be updated 10 years ago and 10 years ago. What do you want to do? And so their budget is tight. I told them it's the foundational document and that it's very important and it's a foundational document to all the regulations. And they decided to sponsor a warrant article to put in $25,000 to build a capital reserve fund for the master plan, for money to have the master plan. And I think as important, that it's important at town meeting to discuss in a public forum, form, the master plan, because obviously this is how much planning discussion occurs on a regular basis. So they agreed to do that instead. But we have someone who is going to do the master plan for us. This is, this is Tia, and I think we remember her from three months ago?
Yeah.
When we were discussing the issues of stagnant regulations, right? And so she's put together a lot of informational stuff and help us out here.
Oh, sure, you want to go now? All right. Well, I don't know if you can see in front of you, but basically I heard your call and I see that you need volunteers and help putting together a master plan. So you didn't have a meeting last month, but I've been chugging away at annotating the master plan, the current master plan. And then also putting together a roadmap on steps that the board can take to complete the master plan and rebuild it, if you will have me.
Oh. Very much. And I did a quick review of this stuff, and it sounds so easy.
It's not, it's not. I see.
But, and, and, and so you've obviously studied master plans a little.
Over the last couple of months.
Yes, over the last, yeah.
I have a background in marketing.
Okay.
So reading census data, putting together market reports. So I also put together a market report and updated census data for the town of Madison.
Oh.
So I have a whole binder of stuff, good stuff. Basically kind of attacking each section of a new master plan and how to build that out.
Oh, it's yours. I know.
Yeah. No.
No, I would, I would help, I would help. I'm not saying that I would help.
Yeah.
But having somebody drive the bus would be awesome and, because I just don't have the time.
Yeah, I think that's really what I was hearing when I was listening to the YouTube on that TV, but basically time versus money.
Right.
And it's expensive, but I think that instead of going and asking for 100 grand plus without doing the legwork, we could maybe do some of that first, which is pretty easy for me to do, just research and doing the background kind of work. So that's the time aspect.
Yeah, yeah. And, and what do you, what do you see as steps? And I read this briefly, and I guess it would be a board question too, is, is do we need, I mean, this speaks to establishing a master plan steering committee, which would be good. But do we, do we need, in the past, like 20 years ago, we had a charrette. You know, how much community involvement do we think we need to do this?
A lot. A lot.
A lot?
Yeah, I think a combination of town surveys. And then we have so many different committees who are in charge of many different things. And the master plan acts as, you know, a beacon for the town, and that's why it's so important. So the other committees kind of, if they're developing their own plans, we make sure it's cohesive.
Yep.
So we're, the master plan by regulation has to have the two sections, the vision and the land use. And then we can expand upon that and invite other groups in who are, you know, experts. They're volunteering, they're, you know, leading their own piece of Madison and what is, you know, what they're passionate about. So we call on them, kind of like in the annual report that Linda puts together. It's, you're asking for an update from each board.
Right.
And that helps kind of fill out like the meat, the substance of the master plan. So it's not all on the planning board.
Conservation is done.
Huh?
Conservation is done, we're almost done with chapter eight.
Conservation, huh?
Yeah, it's in pretty good shape. Chapter eight is in pretty good shape for the master plan. We really kind of started that like a year ago and started hitting on that. So, but that's only one portion of it.
Right. So each, each department adds to it, and then the planning board, you know, makes sure that it's cohesive.
Yep. And, and we have public hearing?
I think so, yes.
Yeah, where, and again, the sense of the board, whether that is enough of an approach? Do we need a consultant to help us review it? North Country Council?
North Country Council, and there are grants for planners. So if down the line, if we do the legwork, we get it all ready to go, we come together, create questions for the survey, put the work in there. If we get to a point where a consultant is needed, yeah, apply for a grant, get the money and, or ask the taxpayers if they would help fund it, if they feel that that's a worthy piece of their money, and then have them come in. But I really think that the first step would be getting a steering committee together, so the stakeholders for the town. And then putting together some questions that we'd like to ask the community. So a community survey, and I already put together a couple different ones. But basically, we need new data. I've done the secondary data, so I pulled the information from the census. I've, you know, gathered that and did a market report and analysis on that. But really, we need to hear what the people want and what they see is happening in Madison.
I think we discussed before that we should try to go through and identify what areas of the plan need to be looked at. And we talked about that before, Kate.
Yeah.
You never came back with it, to fill it out, to see where.
That's why it's in your packet again, because I actually.
And then to, you know, start to discuss the different areas and make some recommendations, put it together and maybe get involved, the community involved in some of the areas, and then, like you said, put something together that we can look at, vote on, and then maybe get.
You all know my thoughts on this one, I think.
This one?
Yeah, there's definitely, I did a strength analysis on it after I annotated it. And, I mean, I think all of the data in the appendices would need to be, in the appendix would need to be updated, and so that's like the census data. Most of this is town history now, I think we could maybe agree on that. And it's, it's great, it's a great start, and like legally, I don't think that we need to have, you know, have to update it, it's just suggested if you could be RSA. So I feel like that's another reason why we should do the legwork first and then ask the town for money, because it's like.
Yeah, well, definitely, that's what I thought we were gonna try to do and implement.
Yeah, so Madison deserves a master plan. We deserve to be able to, you know, envision our future, and this is what helps us do that. And I think that putting a marketing plan behind outreach, behind getting people more interested in it, that would also be one of those first steps. So sending out an email, I don't know if the town does like a letter or if that's a possibility, putting it on the website, putting it on the social things, putting out a press release, that kind of stuff.
I think probably putting something on the town website, asking for participation from citizens. And then, you know, say, okay, give it a month or so, and then start to sit down and go through things.
Yeah, and then we just get to listen. So everybody will have their own kind of opinion on what we should update and their own viewpoint, what's important to them. And then, yeah, or decide what to add in and then put it together.
I think it's a starting point.
Absolutely.
Start from. I'd be willing to be on the subcommittee, you know, to look at it and do it.
Well, I'm way excited about this, if you're that excited about doing it.
So excited, yes.
I'm excited, I'm really excited.
And, and so I guess I would be searching for how to create the structure to, to, even if it's like the next step or the next two steps. What do you see as the next step?
So step one, steering committee, so we've got Paul on, all right.
Katie? I'm not on it.
No? Okay, all right, so.
I don't have time to be answering another, no.
Okay. Yeah, so creating a steering committee, and then deciding what questions we want to ask the public, annotating it, so we have to read it, what we have, which I've done, but everybody on the committee would have to do that. And then, yeah, so annotate, collect the data, and then kind of update each section based on the new data and make sure that it complies with current regulations, zoning, all of that. We have to reach out to the different department heads and ask them for an update as well.
We used to do a capital improvement plan and always struggled with getting input from cap, from department heads. And the budget committee's trying to do a capital improvement plan and struggling with getting input from department heads. So I, you know, that may be a trick, how do you involve them?
They want to be in the master plan and they want their voices heard, they'll offer it up.
Yeah.
With some encouragement, maybe?
Yeah. Or give a select.
Encouraging.
Yeah.
Selectment, too.
You know I can be encouraging.
Yeah.
Or here is your deleted chapter.
Yeah, or here's your old chapter from '02.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I put together a list of committee members, department heads, and stakeholders in the community based off of who I think we could use definitely
Yeah.
on the subcommittee. If they'll do it, I don't know, but we just have to ask.
Yeah.
See if it's yes or no, and maybe it's a small committee. And then.
Should be one from each, one from conservation, one, you know, I mean, it should be.
Yeah, see, even if you can get somebody from SLAM.
Right, I mean, it should be from every.
Yeah. The Scruggles folks. Maybe the, even those STR supporters.
Sure.
Yeah.
But, you know.
There are many voices.
No, I think, I think, I think it's a great idea, so I.
Yeah.
You have great input.
I mean, I don't know how many planning board members you, you want on, I would be willing. I haven't talked with SLAM, I mean, I am on the board at SLAM, so I would be willing to,
Oh.
to represent SLAM also.
Okay.
Yeah, that would be great, any crossovers would be good. I kind of pinpointed some of those folks. And then just, if, if there is resistance to joining another committee, being on another subcommittee, we can also just reach, reach out and ask for their updates, ask for their input. And then based off of census data too, we have older folks, then we have working workforce people, we have even students in the school, and so there are many people that.
There's a lot of ways to get somebody on it, it's gonna have to be asking.
Yeah.
You know, people aren't gonna come and volunteer for it. If you can ask them about it and to help, that's where you're gonna get people.
We don't have anything coming down the road, do we? We don't have anything to do essentially besides the master plan that you see.
No, but that other packet may come our way next, after we've moved some yet.
This one?
Yeah.
We're gonna fight over that tower for a little ways. Somebody wants to put a cell tower on top of King Pine, which makes, oh, you're, you're in that neck of the woods, or?
No, I'm on Pound Road.
Pound Road, okay.
Service always gets dropped right there, so I don't know, is it?
I know, I know.
It's huge.
My, my house is a dead zone.
Yeah, yeah.
Your house all the way.
I still have a landline because of the, the.
Would this, would this help you?
I don't know.
So.
From his, from his.
It's kind of nice having a dead zone sometimes.
So, but I think there's gonna be sufficient pushback in lawyers on that, that.
Because there's a whole neighborhood behind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't know who would be opposed to it, but.
Already got them. Oh, I already have them.
I know, it's like, but I, I think the rules should be, we should write it into the regulation.
The file's still wet, basically, and I've already got it, so.
Write into the regulation that the only people can, that can speak against it are the people that don't have cell phones. Otherwise. So, okay. So what's the next step?
Well, how many people do you envision being on like the steering committee?
You mean like five to 10, or if more people want?
Too, too large, because then.
If you get five, you've got it.
Right.
Going.
Right now. That's a reasonable number for sure. Just if it gets too large, then everything gets too convoluted, it seems.
I think we could just, even if we do it at 6:00 on the first Wednesday.
Meeting night.
Come in, yeah, meeting night.
Yeah.
And.
Start it off that way and.
Yeah, and, and see who else we can get. It'd be nice, it would be nice to reliably get a selectman. I, I told Adam last night that we were gonna talk about him, because he's not here.
He's on the list because he's on the rack.
Yes, he, yeah, he, so he'd be double duty. He's supposed to be our selectman's rep too.
So he just comes a little bit early and we'll get him.
Yeah.
So that's three on it.
So.
You're gonna be on it too?
I'll be on it, yeah, I don't mind being on it, I just.
Kate, you have a list of names of people on the conservation?
Yeah.
That would want to do it?
Uh, yeah.
Could ask?
Want to do it, I won't see them again until the 6th.
But, I mean, they're pretty much done with theirs, so.
They're, they're, they really worked, I mean.
Ralph is.
Some input.
Yeah.
Try to kind of.
Yeah.
Well, why don't you give us a list of names, they're on there, and then we'll call them. See if we can call them and get somebody.
What?
Well, I can ask them as an agenda, you know, on the 6th. I have a workshop meeting I have to do with them at 2:30 on the 6th.
Not me.
Yes, we're doing a workshop at 2:30 on the 6th for the conservation, isn't it?
Two hours worth of Eavesman?
Yep.
Those people are just gonna say, hey, we're gonna do it the way we want anyways.
It's the second one. I'm gonna send out an email, so you'll, you'll see it.
Okay.
But I can ask them at that meeting who wants to be on the steering.
See, as a land use planner, I know this is heresy, but I think we should be more concerned with how to make affordable housing than how to preserve 625 acres.
I'm not a day worker, I'm just sitting here speaking a minute.
So.
That's why we make a master plan, to make it all cohesive, so we can still have MWD houses come in and speak to us, and a lot of it would be educational too, on housing, and maybe they could do a chair, we've done different ones for different towns, so.
Because the community is gonna die if there's just a bunch of white-haired old men sitting around a planning board table.
So you want me to ask them at the next, at the workshop, I can ask them at the workshop.
Yeah, but that's after our, our February meeting.
I want to break the next meeting. I can send out an email to everybody and say, we had a planning board meeting, is there anybody interested that wants to be on the steering committee for the master plan? Get back to me, and then.
Yeah.
It's a good start.
And then, then after you have that, you have the meeting, you can twist the mounds.
I, I heard you, trust me.
But, yeah, I think there's, that it's time to have some, you know, major changes, major look at the direction of the town and land use, but. Might not be popular saying that, but.
No.
So, and you're willing to do this?
Yeah.
And, did you want to be a member of the planning board?
Yes, an alternate.
An alternate?
Or a regular member, election's coming up.
Maybe, but I need to learn how to do it first.
On a job training.
Okay, so I've been doing, I've been sitting around this table for a long time. I'm an alternate on ZBA because I'm still learning.
Oh, okay.
So it's just, you have to, you have to learn what you're doing, and I, so I, you know, people don't want to be an alternate, it's like, no, 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 that's where it's at. You gotta learn what you, see the, takes years to figure out what these people are doing, so. So.
We had a professional alternate in Phil LaRoche for many years.
So, I would make a motion, I would entertain a motion to, to select, to, to, can we do that, or do we ask the selectman?
Selectmen will have to, have their own.
So we can anoint and.
You can, you can, you can make a recommendation, and then you can go to the select board and.
Go to the select.
Do their thing.
Make a motion.
Well, even if it's a vacant seat, the select board would have to, okay, elevate somebody as an alternate.
If the, if there's a vacant seat, the selectman can appoint to the election, but, but you don't, alternates.
We don't have any alternates, but can't we appoint an alternate?
I don't know, I think they have to.
I checked with Linda, it has to be the select board too. But isn't Dave not going to, I thought he said very.
Well, he wasn't sure.
Very vocally here.
He was vocal, then he said he wasn't sure, he hasn't made up his mind.
Okay. I hope not.
So why don't we send a note to the selectman, ask him to consider?
Are you guys gonna make a motion?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll put it in the form of a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so your motion is gonna be to recommend Tia, do you just go by Gagden, or do you, do you, or just?
Gagden.
Gagden, okay. Gagden as an alternate.
A motion been made in seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yeah, ayes have it.
I'm seconded, I'm sorry, I was reading.
Huh?
I'll just want to second it, Carl.
I.
Thank you, sorry, Paul Martin.
I just remember when I was first joined the board, I was appointed to a vacant seat during the meeting without a, the select board, so. You guys just appointed me.
Huh?
But you had to go to the select board, do your oath and everything, right? Yeah, you still had to do all.
After, it wasn't the select board, it was just the.
And, and who appoints the vacant, because normally it's an election? If it's a vacant seat?
The board, because there was a vacant seat, you guys appointed me and voted me in, and then I ran in the following March.
But she just, she just wants to be an alternate.
Yeah.
Well, it's a moot point, because.
Yeah, they need the motion, so I'll pass it on to Linda.
Yeah, and they meet in another two weeks, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Right.
And why don't we just meet at, plan to talk about master plan at our February meeting? And try to get to the first step, and if, if you can send out, can you get master? And try to get to the first step, and if, um, if you can send out, can you get master, uh, department head emails? Do you, can you access the list that the, that the CIP committee is using?
It's all shit, right? I don't know.
So.
Well, department heads, or Linda, Mike, Josh.
Somebody from the library?
Sloan.
What, somebody from the churches, too?
That? I don't know. We don't have any, I mean, nobody, we don't have any, they have their own entity, like, they don't come, they don't.
Yeah.
Have anything to do with the actual.
Well, that would be involving the, uh, the department heads, so let's get the committee.
What about somebody from IDOLYS, too? The master plan's gonna affect them.
Well, again, if you're gonna put on the website and ask.
Probably one of the commissioners on your, on your.
Again, you know, having a name to those people and.
Oh, Ralph, is Ralph Lachan on there?
No, he's stepped down. It's now, um, Wood, 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 is it Wooda Niven, Niven? Wooda, Wooda is a commissioner. And Mark Graffum, and the administrator that used to be there, I don't know her name, I just know who she's like, I can recognize her, she used to be their secretary, and now she's on the, she's a commissioner. I can't keep reminding you, but there's three of them.
I can draft an email for you to sign if you want.
Sure, send it to me, that'd be great. I don't mind.
If you want to involve the library, I can probably make a connection there. I'm somewhat close to the.
But, yeah, I would think the library, cause I think, you know, I thought when computers came out, that the libraries would disappear, and it's been totally the opposite.
Yeah.
So.
If you have that, send an email out inviting somebody to be a member of the, of the committee.
So.
I'll take care of the MCC, though. I'll send, I'll deal with them separately. I'll send an email myself and deal with them, since I do all their stuff, so I'll, I'll send one to them directly.
And was that Kate?
Conservation Commission.
Okay, okay.
Yep, I'll take care of that. And Tia will do it.
Ralph did a lot of that work, didn't he?
What, the master plan?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. He worked hard on that stuff.
Um.
He had input from Noreen and input from Marcia, too.
Yeah. Get somebody from the ZBA saying that we don't want all these dumb rules.
I don't know. I can talk to them, too. I'll see them next week.
Yeah.
So I can ask them. But they're gonna be dealing, well, that's gonna, this is gonna get continued anyway, so I'm pretty sure that's gonna happen, because there's nothing I can do about it right now. So, but I can ask the ZBA.
And are there, this is the cell tower that we're talking about. Um, are there drawings of this cell tower?
There is, there are maps in there, there are all kinds, there's estimates, there's all kinds of stuff in there.
It's something new to fight about, huh?
It's all new, I do all new first, since I started here. SDR, now this, it's like, I got a king, I've got a king.
And we almost put the SDRs to bed, so. And so do we want to convene this committee formally at seven o'clock on the first Wednesday?
Are you calling it, you need the steering committee, is that what you're doing?
Yeah, I, yeah.
Yeah, we could do that, if we don't have anything coming up right on agenda. Might also do it after meeting, and if they have to move it to an earlier time, we could.
But.
So, Kate's gonna give me an email to send out to department heads. I'll take care of ZBA.
Department heads, should we do after we get the committee set up?
Probably.
And identified, and then send out to the department heads what we're looking for.
I think we should start with Conservation.
Let the committee meet first and get together.
Yeah, but we need outside people from the, for the committee.
Yeah, but department heads you want to get input from, not to be on the committee, right?
Well, it'd be good to get.
Well, I would.
The road map says.
I would think that you'd want one person from each board, Mission Conservation, ZBA, Planning Board, then you'd want somebody like this at the library, or somebody from the TPW, you'd want somebody from, from IDOLYS, you, I mean, these are the people that, and somebody from the regular public, if they wanna join.
Right, okay, so you're gonna come, come out and ask for somebody to join the committee?
Yeah, and they don't all have to come to every single meeting, but.
I can put something on the website.
Yeah.
Um, Planning Board, I recommended the steering committee to start working on the master plan, anybody who would like to be on that committee, please contact. We have the town office. I can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know how people look at the website, but I, I hope that they do.
But you, you had mentioned an email. If you sent an email out.
To, but I, I'm sending out to the town, I, I mean, I can send.
No, you said.
Website is for the whole town.
Email to the department heads and the library.
Yep.
Conservation.
Wrong, we talked to them.
And the, um, Board of Appeals, and ask them that the, uh, the planning board is doing this, and then invites your participation, and have. Or invite, we invite you to participate.
And we'll do it on the fifth at seven o'clock.
I think at seven is okay.
Yeah.
And then we can spend an hour at it, and.
Yeah.
We'll see who comes and what happens.
Yeah.
That's all we can do. We can put it out there, I mean, just like when I tried to put notices around for alternates and so forth, you know how, I mean, I posted everywhere, highlighted in yellow on all the boards, post offices, like, in a, like, so.
Madison Facebook page is pretty.
I don't have that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't do the Madison Facebook, I don't do Facebook.
I don't, I don't do anything. I think you should put something there.
You can put something out there, absolutely.
You could do it, I, I don't, I can't really.
I waste enough time in front of a computer.
Sometimes it's good reading.
Battling with QuickBooks, that's my favorite thing.
I get some getting printed. It's easy. It's not very official, so it's just, everybody's been in. I can post it in the post offices, too, as well.
Yeah.
Uh, when I post on the website, I'll, I'll say that the planning board is having a meeting on the fifth, at the regular meeting, anybody who would like to join the steering committee, please attend the workshop, the, not workshop, but just attend this meeting.
Yeah.
I'll post it in all four places, like I normally do when I do a notice posting anyway, put it on the website, and then, you know, I can work up an email to send out to department heads, and I'll take care of ZBA and Conservation, because I'm gonna go see them over somewhere. I can send them an email, too, I mean, it doesn't matter, but I think being in person with them is gonna work better than me sending an email. People will come email me, they'll move on, but I, I'll be with ZBA next Wednesday, and I can like, email them now.
Okay.
All right.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good, this is exciting, I just, I don't wanna drop the ball, is, is what I'm really concerned with, so I think this is a.
Yeah, and it's important to keep it going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I gave you the second panel, um, is a potential timeline, and the steering committee can work with that, and kind of, um, adjust it as they need to, but it's basically a twelve-month roadmap to putting together a master plan.
Yeah.
Um, with each step kind of taking up a, a month or so.
Yeah.
That's not gonna happen in a month, it's something that's gonna take.
No, no, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I understand that concern. So that's why I put that together, just to kind of.
Yeah.
Ease into it.
Yeah, you'll be. Yep. I'll, I'll be, how many other meetings do they have, the other meetings, I don't, I don't know. With every other meeting I have, I don't know how that'll work, probably goes to planning board, because that's what they do, but I don't know. The steering committee, I mean, as they, this committee is formed, I don't know how that's gonna work out.
You know, we can work within the framework of the master plan, of the planning board, I think.
We don't have any cases.
But.
That'll be our other.
It's unusual now for our meetings to go over an hour anyways, so.
Was that, yeah, because you don't have anything on a plate, but don't jinx me.
Okay.
I was gonna get anything in the December nineteenth, Merry Christmas, so.
Okay, very good, very exciting.
And Tia.
Thank you very much.
I find out from Linda, um, and then suddenly, and then do what they need to do, because they need to sign off on, I mean, he, twenty fifty percent of the offer, then, um, Linda, I'll email them, okay.
How, how are there missing pages?
Just one. Oh, I don't know. I wasn't here in two thousand and two, I have no.
And is this all in a PDF that's editable?
This is, um.
Or is this just scanned?
That was just, I took it out of the book upstairs, I printed off the book, and that's where I found these other pages that had the piece in it online. And sixty-six, I can't tell you. I don't know if those are sixty-six or not, I wasn't born in two thousand and two, so I don't, that's why I don't like this master plan, because it was kinda. Yeah. So, but since you're gonna revamp it, what doesn't matter.
Right, yeah.
In the scheme of things.
But is, what exists in an editable form?
I have to hunt around and see if I can find editable form, because that was a little back two thousand and two, I'll have to see.
I mean, in, in a.
Word perfect form, you know.
In a, in Word, or?
Yeah, I'd have to look and see if there is, I think there is, a level research, I have to go through all the archives to see if, where it would be. And people don't save things. I do have new employees all the time, they don't save things in the.
Uh, yeah.
Where you think to find something. I'll do a search through my entire computer, and have it just search the entire thing for master plan, see what I come up with. I disappeared that, just, maybe just. Uh, there was, there were ten, there were ten that were missing out of master plan that is currently on the website right now, but I went into the book upstairs, I was here one weekend, and I'm like, ah, here they all are, they're here, how did they, how did they get in the book, but not on the website? So I don't, I, if I, if I could tell you when that happened in two thousand and two, I'd be rich, someone might think, what happened?
Um, I think that, uh, I think we can also take the PDF and then save it.
I think there's a Word doc, I think there is. I can say there's a Word doc, too, but I think there is a Word doc for it. I just have to do a search in general computer, which I can do.
And we are probably going to be updating most of it based off of my chicken scratch, like, all of my stickies, and most of this is gonna be redone, yeah, so.
Okay.
So it doesn't really matter, it's kind of, that's more like.
Good. Well, thank you very much. This is, you make the selectmen happy, too.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take credit for all of it, so I can be the hero.
That's fine. Like they wanted to pony up, so. I watched the meeting, and, yeah, fifty, fifty going here and there, and.
Good, good.
Kind of figure it out, but.
Great.
Very good, thank you. Great, great job, really, you put a lot of work into it, thank you.
I appreciate it. I'll add you to the list to, to do everything, so you're giving emails that I send out, I send out a packet of, like, the agenda, the minutes, bookwork, I can, I'm also doing a packet for you to come to, so you can kind of know what you're listening to. Thank you. Yeah, we'll walk you through it.
Okay.
I'm glad to have an alternate, very excited. Cause I panicked, like, I don't have, I don't have them, so.
Yeah, I think the last three, well, I did get, we did get one meeting in, but. Right, right, so. I was like, I think I'm jinxed, because.
No, I think you're gonna pick on the core of. Good thing, cause then I'll have somebody else to have, so. It's hard to find people that wanna be on the board.
Yeah.
I mean, I ask people, when they come into the town office, or, and they've been here for a while, will they be interested? Cause I have an application over there. Nine times out of ten, they don't wanna eat any part of it, and it's.
Every town is.
Say yes, and they take it, and they never come back.
Every town's the same.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's public service, you know, and people are busy and, and, we're all here.
You guys do a lot of hard work, and honestly, it was Nicole who was texting, she was like, join the board, get on the board, so I was like, all right.
All right. Well, I'll wait for an email from you, for what I'm gonna, I think I should send out, you know, we'll kind of work on it together. Cool, thank you.
Okie doke. Uh, next on the agenda is draft planning board application adding waiver.
Right, this was Kate Christie's request, so.
So we can add this language.
You guys were talking about that at the November meeting, about, because surveyors are coming with waivers, and we have nothing in our application.
We have no record, record of that, formal.
ZBA does have a, um.
Yeah.
So, this is just something I just kind of.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
And so, we could add this by just having a public hearing? Or do we need a public hearing?
Uh, sure. I'll, um, I'll check with them, I don't, I'm not sure if Marc, he also do, um.
For some reason, I think we have to have a public hearing, and it's just a matter of noticing it as a public hearing to add waiver language.
Let me check on that, I'm not a hundred, a hundred percent sure, you know, like, I don't, you know, the ZBA changed their application.
Oh, they changed their application, don't they?
They did.
They can't change the rules, but they can change the application.
They did, and we didn't have a public hearing of that.
No.
Let me check with Linda to make sure I, I don't, I don't think so.
Okay. And we can vote on that next month.
We can, yeah. Okay.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, that's simple. That, that makes sense, because otherwise, they get to the meeting and they say, oh, we want a waiver, and it's like.
Right, and, and ZBA has it, we have it, which you know, or.
Yeah.
Every time, every.
If you, if you wanna waiver, give us a shout out, so.
I don't think we have to do it, change the application, but I will. I will get back to you on that.
Okay.
The next one.
Number seven is new business that we've done already.
Right, we don't do it all.
So that's very exciting. Number eight is chairman's report, my report was that I did go to the selectmen and, um, and request money, and, and I don't know at this point, when do we have to know? When does the warrant go? Do you know off the top of your head?
When you want it to go.
When does, when is the, should we forget, ask the selectmen to forget about the money, or should we?
It's up to you.
Why don't we leave it on?
Leave it right now.
I think we're on for now, we might need it if we have to have a consultant or something.
Yeah.
I mean, Tia's done a lot of great work, and it looks like she's willing to finish this, and do it all.
But, but at least it would bring it to town meeting.
So stimulating conversation in town.
Even, and even, even if they vote it down.
Yeah.
Right.
At least we'll have a discussion.
Right, yeah. It's on the table.
I think that's a good idea, Mark.
Okay. Um, so I don't have anything, except I have a road trip on Monday.
Oh, you're, you'll be here for the next meeting, though, right?
Going to court.
Oh, yeah.
Going to court on the, uh, on the, um.
Pomeroy.
Pomeroy kiss. So, that's very exciting. Have to get dressed up.
Um, where's the court where you're going?
Manchester.
Manchester. Manchester.
Manchester.
Does that mean you put on your black sweater instead of your green sweater?
Yes, yes. Had the selectmen last night and I had these holy Carharts on, I go, oh God, what do I look like? Oh, well. Selectmen's report, we don't have Adam, but I did tell him that we'd talk about him tonight, so anybody has anything bad to say about Adam, we can say right now.
Tell him he's on the, the steering committee.
So, yeah, tell him he's the chair of the steering committee.
If you don't show up, that's what happens.
Correspondence and administration.
I just got in, uh, well, it's all vacation and it's, I just give these guy, these two wetlands permits, just to look at, I don't, they just, they come to Mike and they just get filed away. And our attorney, I got a letter, um, on the twenty-seventh, her fee, she's a shareholder, so her fee went from two forty-five to two fifty-five an hour, so she's been up to ten dollars. Just so everybody knows, there's, that's, that's not a big increase for attorneys.
No, it's not.
Attorneys cost, I can tell you that, so, but I just wanna pass that along, just so everybody knows that she did a lot. Actually, I mean, her fee is very reasonable. For an attorney, so, but I billed out at one eighty-five, she's only, she's only at two forty-five, so. I think that's very reasonable.
This is, uh, why does a planning board get this?
You are planning.
Huh? Why does planning board get this?
They just, I don't know, just want.
This is an expedited minimum impact wetlands permit application, um, for what would appear to be a dock.
No, why is he sent to town?
I thought conservation.
I, they, they get it too.
On four fifty-one Plains Road, tax map one twenty-two, lot number five.
Nobody does anything with it, it's just information, so I just like to let everybody know that they can.
And, which is on the Plains Road. Just before the Edin Curse. And. There's an existing stair that I was.
That's the piece, I think, that, um, is right next to, um, he just passed it, wait, I'm talking about. Uh, Hugh, Ken Hugh.
Huh?
I think that's the piece, I think that's the piece, the little piece that, um, that came to the ZBA and it was not, they had to get a variance, I think that's the piece. Honestly, I don't think that's it, because they had to get a wetlands, a shoreline permit to be able to, they're building stairs to go down to the lake.
This is, yeah, this is construction install a concrete anchoring pad on shore for support of existing seasonal dock.
I think that's who it is.
Well. And I do not know why they give it to the planning board then. Used to be Conservation Commission would review the.
And I already, I already put density too, so I don't know, but they had UCC on there, so I don't question, I just.
There, okay.
So, but I think that is the piece, that we just went to the, um.
I don't, there's a picture of an existing stairs and that ZBA app didn't have any existing.
No, maybe it's not, I thought that was.
Picture of stairs that looked like I wouldn't go down.
Oh, let me see the pictures.
Did you? Stairs?
No, I don't know what that is, and I thought it was.
But in tough shape.
Yeah.
Over here.
I have to walk them up, I don't even know, it's like, yeah.
I don't know what planning board's supposed to say.
Yes, yes, yeah. Probably just for information, Mark.
It is.
I guess.
Cause they come into Mike, usually they come into Mike's stage.
Yes, yes, cause Mike signed it.
Right. But they, they CC you, so I just, I don't doubt you.
And do you have a file for those things or?
I just leave them in my planning board file.
Just going back to you?
Yeah, I just, I just leave them in your, I have folders for you.
For.
Paperwork and I just leave them in there, if anybody comes and wants anything, they're there, I have them.
She has a folder on you, watch out.
I have a folder on every single one, no, I don't, I don't, I don't.
Well, that would go in the property file.
I grade you.
Somebody would put that in the property file.
They don't put them in there, no.
They don't?
Nope.
I would think, yeah.
That's the only place you'd ever bump into it.
Yeah.
How else would you ever reference it?
We know that they've got it or not, yeah.
Yeah, this, I don't, I mean, it's, yeah.
Oh, well.
I'm just passing it along. And that's all I have, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Number eleven would be.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion?
Well, second.
Motion been made and seconded to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Oh, and then everybody see there, and, and DeRozini, the ZBA decision?
Oh, I didn't report again. I don't think it's.
Regarding.
I don't.
Uh, now the.